Item on call this meeting noted.
Paul Score.
Here.
Sorry for your.
Here.
Never mind.
Item number three is gonna be the recognized guest. And once again, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. Pass around the signing sheet. Have a penny of coffee for anybody who wants any. We're gonna move on to item number four, which will be new business. Tim, since you're here, you wanna start us off on new business?
I can. I can tell you that our inmate count was in the mid-sixties this last week average. Our numbers are going up and down, up and down, up and down. Between high fifties to low seventies. That's where we are. And it's not changing. Like we talked about in the meeting earlier. Like we talked about in the meeting earlier, our numbers are not going down. Judge Henderson and the Court Clerk's Office, Ms. Robin Ray, they've worked very well with us trying to figure out a way to get our numbers down, but also bring revenue to the county. So what we've done is on payout orders, say there's a payer pay, we've set payer pay for $250. Hoping to bring folks in, they'll get in, they'll pay their 250, they'll get back out. We're not seeing that. We're seeing folks come to jail that stay in jail. You know, our numbers are getting higher and our recs are going up, our theft reports are going up. This week, we've had several theft reports and we recovered almost $40,000 from stolen property this week. We recovered a stolen pickup truck. We recovered stolen side-by-side. Take the pickup truck side-by-side, we're at about $40,000 there. You mean you add in the air compressors that we recovered and other little things. We've put two in jail for those thefts and we are currently searching for two more individuals and requesting warrants for those individuals right now. So thefts are happening, we're catching them, you know. Right now, we're not seeing, we're not seeing as many thefts here, but we're seeing thefts over in Sequoia and Latimer and the four counties that are coming, the property coming back over here. We're gonna still continue to work diligently and put those guys in jail. We're losing a deputy. And we're not gonna fill that spot until we see where the budget is due to the fact that our cash flow is extremely down and we have to purchase vehicles. We're gonna have to purchase two vehicles. The two vehicles that we're gonna purchase, I've, I've worked with vendors across the state on state purchasing programs and we're going to purchase one 2017 Chevrolet Tahoe out of Texas, reliable Chevrolet. Out of Texas, they were able to get it outfitted and the Tahoe ready to go to the street for $39,682. That's cheaper than what the Durango was gonna be. And the reason that we're having outfitted and everything is because we don't have the, we're gonna have to finance it all. We don't have the cash flow to purchase the vehicle and then get it outfitted. So we're having to purchase the vehicle on state bid and then get it outfitted. They actually outfitted it compared to anywhere that we, around here that we've checked. They outfitted that vehicle with everything that we needed, that we put out there needing. They outfitted it for $5,900. That's very cheap. The second vehicle we're gonna have to purchase is, we're gonna purchase is gonna be a 2018 Dodge truck. The purchase of that truck is $37,261.24. That's gonna be a patrol vehicle. That patrol vehicle will be given to the deputy with the highest mileage truck. And it's gonna be ready, it's gonna be patrol-ready when he gets here as well. The Tahoe, I'm gonna drive the Tahoe. I do all the processing of all of our crime scenes that we have, all of our search warrants we do. I do all the, all the processing and we're gonna put all of our processing stuff in that vehicle. Because right now, the way it sits is we don't have a vehicle ready to process anything. We have something happen, we all drive trucks, we gotta come to the office, you gotta get everything and then you gotta go back. You're liable to forget something, you're liable to have something and now you're making two or three trips back to the office. This vehicle will be set up like my vehicle was when I was at the DA's as an investigator. We're gonna have it set up, ready to process. It'll be basically a mobile crime unit when there's, when an incident happens. Since I respond anyways, we'll go, we'll process everything, bring everything back. The other thing with the, with the Durango and also with the Tahoe, due to the fact they're being the same price, after talking to several folks in the car business, Mr. Dunby in one, also his son being another, we look at the resale value, the resale value of a Tahoe is a lot better than the resale value of a Dodge Durango when we get to the point where they can be resold. So our look is, our, our aspect is, these vehicles get, we're getting to begin, become high mileage, we're able to sell them out, utilize that money back to the purchase of a new one. And we're not sitting with something like the Dodge Chargers that we had that didn't bring anything. We sat out there till they burned or different things like that. So that's where we're at. The app, the cost of those vehicles total, $76,943 on a five-year note at 3% interest. You're looking at $1382 a month. So at $1382.54 a month, we're looking at $16,594.88 a year. We're gonna work diligently to save that money and sell a couple of our other vehicles. Hopefully along with forfeitures, we'll be able to get there and get that done. We're gonna talk to Karen this week. What we'd like to do is seek bids for finance locally. See if our local banks would be interested in doing the lease purchase. What does that fall? We can't do that?
Can't do that. That's it. You better check with your auditor.
Let me explain to me, because I, I don't know.
You cannot go out and seek financing.
On, on.
I'm just using Gary, 'cause he's sitting there and I, Gary can.
So.
Go do it for you. If you're gonna buy, I mean, just saying, if you're gonna buy a vehicle off someone, like when we buy equipment.
Yeah.
We can't go out and seek financing.
Well, and that's why I was trying to.
But I meant, you can go find a vendor, you wanna buy something off of him and let him do it. And you'll be okay, but don't, don't go out there, don't go out there yourself seeking.
So we can't seek.
Can we not get phone quotes and then pass that on to the vendor we're purchasing from?
I, I believe you better check on that, 'cause I believe that's a no.
I'll check on it. If not, they all have.
I believe he personally can do it, but I mean, he can.
And I know, Tim, last month, when you brought up that the commissioners divided the vehicle, we can't legally do that.
Okay.
I checked on you.
Can't do it out of highway two.
You have to take it out of the general right now. You're waiting to see.
In my only argument, and I'm only, and I'm not arguing, I understand us financially, but I do not feel it's fair, the sheriff's office does not have a travel allowance, nor does he have any availability to purchase a vehicle, because we barely have enough, well, with your guys' graciousness, we barely have enough money to pay payroll. Therefore, I feel that the sheriff gets penalized where he doesn't have that travel allowance to purchase a vehicle or to drive his own vehicle.
We can, we can check into that travel allowance.
The travel allowance is set by the state. It's $600 a month and I understand, $600 a month is not gonna cut it for what you do.
No, it's, it's been $7,200 a year. But that $7,200, if it was put into the budget, that would actually help purchase that. I mean, that, that would get me down where I had to come up with $9,000 a year to make that payment. But we can, I just wanted that to be known that we're gonna work diligently and we've, we've worked hard with your guys' help to save money, but.
If you want me to check on this, I will.
Okay.
And we, we're not done with the budget yet.
Well, and I understand, the budget's in a bad way and I, and I understand that. And I would rather, and I'll be very honest, I'd rather make sure that I had guys on the road to take care of these people, our citizens, than to worry about me having a vehicle allowance. But I've gotta have vehicles.
Your vehicle, allowance. You don't want that.
No, I, I don't, I'm just stating that.
That $600 a month is nothing for what you have to do.
I understand, I'm just saying that we gotta have vehicles that are dependable on the road and that's where we're at right now.
I know you brought that up, so I just thought I'd like to know today.
And I appreciate that. Other than that, we're running pretty smoothly. You know, I, I just want to be transparent about the reason that we're purchasing vehicles is because our vehicles are high mileage and we're having vehicles fall apart on us daily. We're waiting on one other Tahoe right now. Brandon Amos and TNR Auto Body Shop, they did the bodywork on the shot-up Tahoe that we had and Brandon is going to wrap that Tahoe at no cost. The Tahoe's gonna be wrapped in breast cancer awareness and it'll look sharp when it's done and that'll be utilized as a canine vehicle plus kind of a dare car to take to schools and let kids look at. We've got some things that were donated, we've got some speakers and stereo and different things like that. We're gonna put in that vehicle at no cost to the county to make that vehicle kind of a show vehicle for kids to see, parade, different things like that. But that's where we are vehicle-wise, that's where we are county-wise. We have a funeral today, Captain Jonathan Bash, Brooklyn Fire Department was killed last week in an automobile accident. So all of our guys will be attending that funeral. I wanna thank Paul for sending his guys, Aaron helps tremendously. And the folks don't realize that Aaron serves as the mercy director and he also helps us at the jail, helps at the sheriff's office side. He's done a fabulous job, but they cleaned up Brooklyn Cemetery, that's where the funeral's gonna be today. And it had been a while since it'd been taken care of, but we felt that it needed to be taken care of and we went out there and then also trash was picked up, some kids destroyed, parking lot there pizza hut, all the way to the county, all the way into Highway Nine. So we picked that up the same day as well. And then we're continuing to pick up trash and we're actually gonna start, financially, we'll see where, where it leads us. We're gonna try to start a trash service for the county, where we're picking up trash once a week. We're gonna start once a week, we're gonna start doing, we're gonna start on Star Road this week. Go from intersection all the way down to, no, Star Road, K O Lane Road, excuse me. We'll start at K O Lane Road, start there all the way down to the parks. Next week, we're gonna try to do crossroads all the way to Garland. And then the following week, we're gonna try to do either Lona Valley Road or Samboys Road and try to do, you know, four to six to eight miles in a day, however far we can go get. So just try to do one road at a time. We're also gonna start trying to weed it around the stop signs, probably around October, end of October, after we get a good freeze, try to get the stop signs knocked down and try to get some of that, some of those areas cleaned up for the county to help. But we're gonna start utilizing these inmates that are there that we actually get out and work. So now again, that is all gonna be contingents on how we can, how we can do financially. That's what we're gonna start looking at doing. Commissioner, with that, I took up enough of y'all's time and I appreciate it.
I'll segue in on other new business on my end with taking the guys out. So they have been, have got a good little work group going on and they've, they've been fantastic. But Tim was talking about moving around signs or weeding around the stop signs. I wanna be sure and I'm gonna talk to y'all about this every, every meeting we have, about being sure that these sides of the roads get brush-off for this next fire season. It's just something, and I've already reached out to the state to be sure that the state highways are, are done the same way as far as emergency management side goes. That's a huge thing for us. We gotta be sure and get that done whenever we can, as soon as the growing season's over with. Department of Labor, for our consultative visit, walk-through at each location is gonna be September 26th and 27th. I know the cutoff was September 15th, but since I requested, we're still gonna fall into that grace period. So he will be here 26th and 27th. He will walk through each site, each county barn, courthouse, everything, annotate, talk to us about what needs to be done and the improvements and changes that'll need to be done. So he'll be there for, he'll be here for two days. So we'll probably do courthouse and District Two in one day and then Whitefield and Kyoto on the second day.
Is he coming out to the jail too?
No, he is not, he doesn't plan on coming out to the jail. Unless you, unless you want him to. On, as far as any of the FEMA stuff goes, obviously, they are, these guys are hooked up inside Texas and Florida right now. And so it's just gonna take a while. And a couple weeks ago, whenever I had mentioned about the storm shelter program coming into the county, there, it's been chaos for them too, because everybody available has gone either to Houston or has gone down to Florida to help out with what's going on down there. So that has been, had to be put on the back burner for them right now, me getting them to come in and set that program up. I wanna reiterate, and what Tim said, I sure do appreciate, appreciate you guys' support and working with us. Oh, one question real quick, on whenever we disposed of all the equipment, the transfer station will not take monitors. They do not take computer, they'll take everything else, they will not take computer monitors. So we have to find a way to dispose of the computer monitors. They're just sitting on our trailer at the jail right now. There's ten, yeah, there's ten monitors right now. And that ranges from flat-screen monitors to the old big monitors.
I checked with the Chalk Tows.
Okay.
I think they do it photo, so they might check with them.
Okay, alright. Do they have a recycling center down there or?
I'm not, not sure. I think we get to cook some down there.
Alright, thank you.
Is there any more new business? Okay, without any more new business, I'm gonna move on to item number five. Approved the Mr.'s proceedings from previous meeting. I'm gonna make the motion to approve it.
Paul Score.
Yes.
Sanders, I agree.
Item number six will be approved, blanket POs for this week. And we have a $5,000 PO, the jail will be construction. We have a $1,000 PO, Fleet Corps. And we have a $1,800 PO, the Performance Food. So those will be the three blanket POs this week.
Mark, we approve.
Second.
Clark and Perry.
Yes.
Paul Score.
Yes.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Moving on to item number seven. Moving on to Mark, back to my end. Did I pronounce that right?
Mark.
It's close enough.
It's nice.
Close enough.
VIP for an F A. So Mark.
How you doing, Paul?
Doing good.
Good to see y'all again. Chris and I just wanted to drop in and check in on you, make sure everything's still going well, phone system-wise, dial tone-wise. Promised you we would do so, so we wanted to do that. We were thrilled when we went back and looked and saw we had one call-in this year in 2017 that you guys needed some help with a voicemail and that was it, so that was encouraging to see. But just wanted to follow up with that. Also, just because I heard what the sheriff was talking about here, that we are working, I spoke with Robin this morning. I'll be working with Robin after this as well, see if we can help her save some money on the dial tones since budget is being discussed today pretty heavily. We'll be shooting to help you, help her out there. And if there's anything else in the county that we can help with, from dial tone to internet service provider kind of a thing, where we can help you save some more money, we would, we would welcome that opportunity. We'll throw that out there and let you refer us where you need us to go. Chris, do you have anything?
Just, is there, anybody got any concerns or questions or outstanding? I mean, we, we see a ticketing system. You guys call in, it runs through a ticket and if, but if they don't put it on paper somewhere, we don't hear about it. So is there anything going on, any pressing issues anybody knows about as far as the phones or internet or?
What is the best contact number we can call?
The easiest, yeah, 918-279-7001, right? Yep.
918.
279-7001. Mark's gonna give you a card. You can also go onto our website, which is www.viptsg.com and enter a ticket. From a.
Hey, sir.
From a county clerk perspective, that may be a really good way to do things. Or each, and each autonomous office, you know, elected office can do their own tickets too, but they enter an email address and it actually updates, every time that ticket is touched, it sends an email saying, here's what we did with your ticket, here's where it is, here's what, whatever process is going on, resolution we've come up with. We like that system a lot, 'cause our customers seem to interact and you can reply to that email and say, hey, y'all said this was fixed, but we had this issue occur these two times after y'all said it was fixed. So sometimes a little easier for, for people to respond in an email instead of having to pick up a phone and try to make time for a phone call or something, so. But either way works for us and they'll, they'll get equal attention as far as we're concerned.
Just to hand something, we have an election tomorrow and I found out I've been walking this morning very relax.
Which, at the election board? Where, what building is that? Is that in here?
Behind.
Behind here?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that, is that one that's on ours? Is the election board? Okay.
Yes.
We'll go back there and look at it while we're here if y'all are okay with that. So is there anybody back there? Anybody else got anything?
She may be in the back.
Karen. You know, you're involved in all the, you guys in that service. I haven't heard any complaints.
That's good news, right?
I usually get a call if there's a problem with them.
Yeah, yeah, well.
I haven't, I haven't had one in a long time.
Yeah, that's why I said our ticket system shows, which, no news is good news in our business, man, that's, you know.
So far, everything's going okay with it.
Good, good, alright, well. If y'all excuse us, we'll see you in about three months, unless you got anything else.
Alright.
Can I, can I ask, let me, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
I act as a special consultant for Wagner County Sheriff's Office. Have y'all checked into your billing for DOC? Have you looked at that?
Yeah, we look at it very.
Are you, are you rebilling them everything they don't pay you?
We're in the process.
Okay, one thing we did is, you know, they were paying half of everything, right? We started billing everything, so we'd get a bill at 30 days, they'd pay half, we'd invoice the other half. And it's literally if we paid, billed 8,000, went to 4, 4 went to 2, 2 went to 1, and so on. We started following a private sector approach to invoicing and statements. That has helped tremendously. The other thing you might look into is any, if you have any sanctions from the courts, those people that are coming into your jail with sanctions, we started billing them 27 bucks a day and that is legitimate. That's a legal charge.
We're working on that, we're talking about sanctions with drug courts, we're always talking about.
Right.
The drug court sanctions, we're working on that. That, that's an uphill battle, but we are working on that.
Well, just throwing out a couple things that are working for us and we're seeing some revenue increase there and it's.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, it's, call up there to Wagner and ask them some of the changes they're making and, and it's working. And we're seeing some, some additional monies come in, just basically chasing dollars that already exist. Your medical billings, your, you know, how many, how many aspirin do you give out that you're not billing for, et cetera, et cetera. We got one guy that's charging us, it's costing us 1,100 bucks a month for diabetes medication and we're able to now recoup that as well, so. Anyway, just some suggestions.
We appreciate it.
Knee-deep in that, so, well, let's go check out the election board. If that's alright, appreciate it. We'll see y'all in a few months.
Check it out.
Alright, thank you, we'll let you know.
Thank you, y'all, Tom.
There'll be no access taken in item number seven. Moving on to item number eight. Discuss consider signing August number four processor and treasurer's office. I'll make motion late. Mark made the motion. Sanders seconded.
Clark and Perry.
Yes.
Sanders, I agree. Paul Score.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number nine, discuss consider signing resolution for renewal of our broadband. Unless, you know anything about that, Tim?
Not with us.
I know that's not a job with the.
That's gonna be your internet service. But.
Is there nobody here to talk with this one?
That was, that just left. Those guys that just left, wanted to update our.
Oh, yes, you had to be up there and then you stopped.
Yeah, but they're, they're the ones that provided that, so before, they're the ones that update this, rewire it and everything. I, what I was asking Karen is, well, I'm just telling you, I can't see.
No, she, she left.
It's just at the courthouse, not the county barns. But I haven't had no complaint, heard any complaints.
Well, the D R needs a new environment. I called, oh, three weeks ago. I got with Michelle this morning, so I'll just talk to her before they know. Is, yeah, is the process going on?
No, I believe it is.
It's a hard to get a hold of to be in this. And they.
But it is a, says here, a 10-year extension all the way to August 18th, 2028. Well, I mean, you just had. It'll be as long as.
I would don't want to table that just.
Can't oblige anyone for a year.
No, that's true.
Just asking you all for. The service is good and prices are. Very good, I'm discounting it.
We'll give Robert some.
Well, I am, I would ask some questions about this 10-year.
You don't wanna get into any kind of 10-year agreement on any.
Well, the county cannot get into, we can't obligate financially anything over a year. I mean, that's. You break that, say, I mean, that's, we're gonna want that too. Is that how you read it? I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty plain there. Whether somebody can make a motion to table it or somebody can make.
I'm at the motion table.
To do a little research, we're gonna, I'll second that motion. We're gonna do a little research on that. Sanders made the motion, I second it, because I don't know about 10-year extension. I don't even know if we can legally do that. But I know it's a financial obligation.
Is that tabled and filled now?
Correct. Sanders said she'd investigate it.
Check it out.
You wanna make copy of this and give this back to Karen? Karen should give this back to you as soon as she makes a copy. But I'm gonna try to catch it before, figure it out, it's me, we'll try to catch it.
Sanders.
There's nothing, we have a number right here. Yes.
Yeah.
So item number nine will be tabled. So we're gonna move on to item number 10, sign appropriation transfers and appropriation section of C D P Os. Sanders, you wanna get that on your agenda?
No, we aren't wanting to sign it.
It's the same thing, but I meant to use it.
I didn't, because I was fine and I've got that. Of what I'm doing, I'm fixing, uh, bonded electric as well, state.
Yeah, they, they hang around 30 minutes here. Anyway, it's not on the agenda, but it's, it is on the agenda, but not like it's normally on the agenda. We're $12,249.63 short on the jail paper this month. And it's usually a separate agenda item, but we still signed it under item number 10. I guess we'll go the same thing. Sign here and here, here and here. So, here, 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 and here.
Yes.